Cross that.
Okay, welcome to the Town of Colony Planning Board Meeting. I guess I'll say the date for the record, Tuesday, December 15th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The meeting is hereby called to order and Sean, could you kindly call the roll?
Lou Mayon here. Paul Rosano.
Here.
Susan Milstein.
Here.
Chip Bashworth.
He's got his mute on.
Chip Bashworth.
Here.
All right. Craig Shamlin.
Here.
Peter Studo.
Here.
And Chief Hyder. He's in the meeting. His audio is still connecting. I could see him though.
Okay. Happy holidays, everybody. I think this will probably be our last meeting of 2020. Next item on the agenda is the report of the Planning and Economic Development Director. And could you speak about the COVID situation relative to our meeting, Sean, in your report?
Sure thing. So regarding the COVID situation, Planning Board meetings are in virtual format until further notice, until things improve or get better. We'll continue to do that, the same practice we've had as in the past. For those members of the public who are interested in providing comments on projects, they're invited to do so by registering for the Zoom meeting. However, those who just want to observe the meeting are welcome to do so via YouTube. We do upload these meetings back to the meeting, the town's meeting portal where the meetings are normally streamed when we're in Town Hall a couple of days after this meeting, but we do keep them available on YouTube. The Planning and Economic Development Department, as well as all of the Public Works, Public Operations Building, it's currently closed to public. You can make appointments to meet with staff, but we do have a system for people to drop off and pick up materials as needed. So that's where things are currently with COVID. I just want to let the board know too, I don't believe I covered this in a previous meeting, but the town was notified by the Capital District Transportation Committee that we were successful in requesting a technical assistance grant award. And so we're going to look forward to working with CDTC in 2021 to look at potential updates to the land use code regarding parking regulations and how we might better incorporate electric vehicle charging stations in our parking regulations, as well as green area ratios to look at overall how we calculate and and address green space on projects.
Thank you. That's a very good report, very informative. I will call up the first action item, or at least presentation on the agenda, 855-82861, First Street, Lincoln Avenue Development, Phase 1A Sketch Plan Review for a 28-acre parcel for construction of two warehouse office buildings. One is 1,000, 120,000 square feet and the other is 55,000 square feet. Each building will include a loading dock, storage area, and supporting roadway infrastructure. And we'll turn that over to Department for an introduction and then to the applicant.
All right, Zach Harrison's our planner, leading this project. I'll ask him to introduce the project.
Yeah, so Phase 1 is actually under construction. So we had a DCC meeting back in October to discuss the actual entire master plan for the site and this actual phase. The DCC meeting went pretty well overall. The one thing that we did have one concern with is with the land, the lot line adjustment that will end up happening with this project, we're going to end up landlocking 950 Fifth Street. So any project that happens on the backside of the project, which I believe is 950, yeah, 950 First Street, will require an ODA or for the town to actually take over the roadway that's being developed along the railroad track side. And we're talking with the TPW Department, that might be a holdup if, you know, they don't see a full phase come through. So other than that, I'll let the applicant and his engineer go ahead and do a presentation on the project.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adam Frosino. I'm with McFarland Johnson Engineering with the Site Design Engineers for the project. I am going to, I just had some internet issues here. I just want to make sure I don't lose connectivity. So I'm going to actually turn my video off if that's okay.
Sure.
So we're here representing Louisi Brothers Contracting, who, as you guys know, has developed the front portion of the project, as Zach mentioned. I know you can't see my cursor, so I'll do my best to kind of describe, but you know, the front portion is under construction today. And as part of that original project, the back half of the site was slated to be a construction yard for Louisi Brothers Contracting. Essentially going to be a very large compacted gravel area where they would stage their equipment and materials for their projects they're working on throughout the area. As this project has developed, Louisi has chose to not use that area as a staging area. They are going to choose a different location in the back half of the site for their shop. And with that being said, they'd like to develop this area into what is kind of earmarked to be some sort of warehouse facilities based on the current market demand. So that's how we got to this point. So on that note, we have laid out the site for the back half, and we have attempted to do our best to match all of the previously approved aspects of the project. We have matched the amount of impervious surface to what was previously proposed, and we are planning to reuse all of the existing stormwater facilities. There is one large infiltration basin on the, I'll call it Page North, but the upper center part of the site, as well as one on the lower left part of the site. And then there's a bunch of infiltration basins as well that would allow the water to infiltrate back into the ground. We would continue to use that same methodology and same location for all of those features, but instead of a large gravel area, there will be now, they're proposing to have two buildings. And the larger building in the lower portion is shown as 120,000 square feet. That could be a single tenant, but it could also be broken up depending on what the demands are in the market. But it could be broken up maybe into two buildings or three or four buildings, but nothing that would combine for more than 120,000 square feet. So we went with kind of the worst case scenario for our site layout and as part of this sketch plan. There was a follow-up traffic study done as part of Phase 1 to assess the possibility of potentially doing something like this in the back half. And a generic amount of 500,000 square feet of warehouse was reviewed by Creighton Manning Engineering, who did the original traffic study, to just do an assessment as to what would that change the results of the previous traffic study. So that was already completed, so traffic should not be an issue as it relates to the previous approval. And as Zach noted, we did have a DCC meeting on October 14th. We got a lot of good feedback and comments from the various departments of the town, and nothing that was a showstopper on our end. We feel we can, you know, address all their comments. A lot of it was adding specific details and things like that, that we're not at that level yet, we're still on sketch plan. So really wasn't any red flags raised as part of that meeting. And so I guess if you want, we can go into a little more detail on the site, but I'll kind of keep it big picture. And then I'd like to address any questions that the board or the public may have on the project, but.
Okay, Adam, hold up. Okay, can we look at the master plan, Sean?
Yep.
And I'd like somebody like Sean with the cursor to tell us what was the staging area and now is going to be replaced by a building, or if you could do that with a cursor, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, Adam, I'm going to give you a remote control so you can control that cursor, walk people through. There you go, you should have it now.
Does everyone see my mouse? I'm going in a circle?
No, it's stationary. The cursor is stationary.
You might have to accept, I gave you control of the screen. I don't know if it prompts you.
Yeah, and nothing came up that said, do you accept?
There you go.
It's moving now.
Okay, so previously, the intent was that this building right here would be the Louisi Shop Building. And then this whole back area, roughly where I'm surrounding with my cursor, was going to be a large gravel yard area. So we added some green space within that area, but then that area also got expanded out in this location with more impervious, but the net increase was zero for the amount of impervious area. That was kind of our goal, so that we could stick with the stormwater improvements that were proposed for Phase 1. And this master plan shows what I mentioned earlier, up here it's showing, you know, potentially four separate buildings, all same style, but if there were four separate tenants that wanted their own building, it's still a possibility to configure the site like that. But the overall intent is to have the main entrance come through here and have to try to have all of the vehicle parking be in the quote "front doors" of all the facilities to get a nice look, with all the loading docks to be kind of in the backside of the buildings. That's the intent of the Phase 1A development. We did maintain in this area a berm that would obstruct the view of the buildings from the residents. That was maintained as part of the design. We have actually, during the DCC meeting, we're showing this turnaround here. We've discussed turning that maybe into a hammerhead, and there's actually an existing building here that would be reused in some manner, but act more as a visual barrier. It's an older looking brick building, and that could act more as a visual barrier again from the residential community, because there's no berm in the spot, and have more of a hammerhead that would go something like this to the town's standards for fire truck turnaround. I don't know, Chuck, Chuck Buffundy from Louisi Brothers is on the line. I didn't know, Chuck, do you have anything else you might want to add that I might have missed? If not, maybe we could just open the floor for questions?
Yeah, I'll add, I'll add one thing quickly, Adam. So when it comes to the staging area that was originally in the Phase 1 area, all that was done in what Adam's referencing, now that we got the master plan up, is what, it got pushed farther back into the site and is now actually being proposed in Phase 1B, if you could show them that, Adam. So that is where the new staging area would be. And what we were trying to grab for intent there was, is Peter didn't want the front of this complex to be our staging area. You know, we wanted to try to beautify the front from the road and then keep our, you know, construction trucks in the back. So it was more of just an aesthetic movement after we closed on the back 50 acres, so.
Okay, if you're done for now with your presentation, we're having this project reviewed by our town designated engineer, CHA, and Joe Grasso's here. I know he's looked at this plan, although he hasn't formally reviewed it or issued any letter. Joe, could you give us your comments?
Sure thing. Pete, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so you're correct, we didn't issue a formal review letter, because this is just that sketch, but we did participate in the DCC meeting with the various departments, and we raised some comments there. And, you know, just going back, we were the TDE that reviewed the Phase 1, you know, project a while back. So you know, there's a number of comments that we have, even that the project is at sketch level. And to begin with, you know, when, you know, the Phase 1 project was looked at, it was a relatively small scale project and understanding that the intent may be to further develop the rest of the project site heading north. But those plans were somewhat speculative at the time, and although we talked about the potential need to look at, you know, a master planned cumulative impact approach of the project site, we felt it was a little bit premature at that time. But now what we're, you know, with Phase 2 now coming as part of a new application, and we commend Louisi for providing this master plan that we've got on the screen, but we do think that the time is right to start for the board to look at, you know, the cumulative impacts of development on the overall project site, both in terms of, you know, access to the site, traffic-related impacts, you know, impacts on the neighbors, and then any other environmental impacts that may get identified through a seeker review process. Because this involves, you know, non-residential use over 10 acres of disturbance, it's a type 1 action, so coordinated review is required, and obviously a full environmental assessment form is required. So, you know, the board will have to take a close look at all these cumulative impacts. As part of this application, you know, I think, you know, we've heard discussion about the yard for Louisi being part of the 1B. I think we have to understand, you know, if that's going to be, you know, developed, you know, commensurate with Phase 1A, then it really needs to be rolled into this immediate site plan application, so we know exactly what the board is looking at approving immediately, as well as those future development actions that may occur at some point in the future. One of the commitments that were made when the board reviewed Phase 1, a commitment by the applicant, which we thought was extremely important and something that we don't see represented in the current plan, is, you know, no connection to Ninth Ave, which is lined with, you know, small residences. It's a residential neighborhood there. And, you know, there was concern by the Planning Board in our office about the need to make sure that we've got a physical and noise separation barrier between what goes on on this project site, understanding that it's a, you know, more of an industrial or warehouse use and those residences. So a couple of things, you know, struck a chord with us when we looked at the site plan. One is, you know, the 30-foot-high berm that was established as part of Phase 1 along Ninth Ave that was discussed, that it would extend to the north as future development was proposed. That's no longer the case. I think this plan is showing much less room for the berm, and I think that the height has been cut down from 30 feet down to 15 feet. So that's a concern. And then we've got the truck turnaround, you know, right in the middle of the berm, which is going to cause the berm to be, you know, brought down to grade, and we're going to eliminate a significant portion of the function that that berm would provide if it was continuous from a north-south direction. So, you know, we think that the access, that emergency access connection to Ninth Ave should be completely eliminated, and, you know, emergency access to the site should be accomplished by, you know, the two physical connections to First Street, which are proposed, but then also cumulatively, or in the future, looking at the desirability for extension of the town roadway all the way up to 155. And Adam, you did mention that you've had Creighton Manning, you know, look at the traffic study from a cumulative impact standpoint, which I think is fantastic, but we have yet to review that traffic study. And a future recommendation of ours may be recommended connection to the 155 corridor and try to redirect, you know, some or the majority of the traffic from this project site to 155, but we'll be able to put more insight on that as we get into the technical review of the traffic study for the project. Zach, in his comments, he had talked about the possible need for a subdivision application to join the site plan applications, that we can understand where the lot lines are proposed and whether or not all of the lots being created comply with the zoning and provide the required frontage, as well as, you know, exactly where we're looking to establish a town road. Our thought is that a town road right of way has already been established as part of the Phase 1, and the logical extension is to continue that through to the north. We don't necessarily think it needs to follow the tracks, as you may think, because it's one of the very desirable features of the project site is that it's along the railroad tracks. And it's rare to be able to propose uses and tenants that can take advantage of having their own rail spur. So, but we do think that that road, a town road right of way, you know, should extend up through the site. It may be all the way to 155. You know, when we look at the creation of the lot lines, we could be looking at lots that don't have, aren't using their frontage for access, and therefore it could trigger the need for an ODA. That can be a time-consuming and cumbersome process if not done as part of the onsite of the development plan. So we just wanted to raise that flag. And the need for an ODA is something that gets, you know, shaken out when we start to look at an accurate subdivision application and go through that zoning verification process. You know, when we look at these types of uses, warehouse, trucking, light industrial uses, you know, accessibility on all four sides of these buildings is something that's supported by fire services. And at this high-level planning stage with undefined tenants, it looks like we should be able to easily accommodate four-sided access to all these buildings. So that's something that we would like to see incorporated into the plan. In terms of the orientation of the second building, the smaller building, you know, we expect that there's, you know, no tenants identified for these buildings and these footprints are schematic, and even the layouts may be schematic, but from an orientation of that smaller, I think it's a 45,000 square foot building, or no, it's building number two, my plan shows 55,000 square feet. We may want to flip that building in the east-west direction, so that the site that the trucks are on are actually away from the residences, just to further, you know, minimize the number, the noise impact on those residences to the west. See, I think we are through my comments. Yeah, I think I'm through my list, so.
Okay, I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions, just to promote the discussion when we call on the board members. The four buildings, what's the current contemplation? It's going to be one big building, or four, or you're not sure?
I think they're not, I think they're not sure. It all really depends on, if you get a tenant that really wants 120,000 square feet, then that would be the way they go. But Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, it's really, it's really unknown. There's no target tenant or anything like that at this point.
No, and what we're trying to do for the town is provide, we've had lots of interest after our master plan was given to our broker on a few different tenants that range from, you know, about, you know, the 20,000 square foot range to the 120 square foot range. So we, like Adam said, we wanted to propose the worst-case scenario, because if somebody approaches us for the 120,000 square foot footprint, we know that we have that in a future phase. The 20,000 square foot footprints we have in Phase 1, and then we have like a good mix of buildings sizes as we go back.
Okay, thank you. That's a great response. The final question that I want to ask for clarification is Joe's suggesting that we make a connection on the north end to Route 155, which makes a lot of sense, if possible. When I look at who owns that property, it says the United States of America, both of those parcels, which I think is part of the arsenal. Have you had any discussions with them about making that connection?
I can speak a little bit on this. I don't know who has control of the computer screen, but if we could flip back to the master plan. So right now, what's being proposed, and Adam, do you have control of the cursor?
I don't. I think it's Zach.
Zach, so, you know, from our DCC meeting, I kind of went over a little bit of the, what we're proposing would be the future town road, right? So at this time, we're constructing the roads, even in Phase 1, the main boulevard is what I'm calling it, the main entrance point to town standards, right? Well, we're paying for third-party inspections through advanced engineering, and we'll continue that mindset going back since discussions with, at the DCC meeting with the town. So right now, what our approach was, is to come in at that entrance that the cursor's at right now, we come up to the, what's shown as the corner of Phase 1A along the railroad tracks. As Joe has mentioned, we wanted to take the railroad track spurs right now that are proposed in 2B and make sure that we leave room for those with discussions with CP Rail. The town road would then come around that Phase 1A where the lot line adjustment that Zach is discussing would have to take place. And then the town road would then continue up, where we've left open real estate at the back end of our property, that we left for flexibility because of the town's comments for a future connection to 155. As you noted, though, you know, we're bordered here by the arsenal. We have not discussed anything with the arsenal. So it, you know, it kind of would be something that I would believe, you know, would have to be a joint effort between us and the town of maybe, you know, discussing the town benefit of that connection, and maybe discussing not only with, you know, the arsenal, but also CP Rail on how that connection could take place in the future, which would, in theory, be part of 2A or 2B, depending on when the town feels that it's really needed, so.
Okay, I think that, you know, the traffic study will tell, but I think that may very well benefit the project if we can get control of that. Okay, Paul, do you have any comments? Paul Rosano.
I guess I would have to say that the truck turnaround and leaning out to Ninth Street there, or I can't really, Fifth Street. I'm not in favor of that turnaround. I'd like to see the berm continue, if that's possible. If you have to have the turnaround, just move it, I guess you would say, at this point to the north a little bit. And if anybody's going to be occupying offices within, going forward, I haven't seen anything about a dumpster anywhere on this site. Is that something that was going to be done at a later date? Because I believe there are, are there offices going to be here?
So yes, when we get to the point of conceptual design, we'll definitely draft in dumpster enclosures and the necessary site amenities that would have to, that we would need to support the buildings.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you.
The tentative spot for the dumpsters would probably be on this plan, as you see, it would be between the buildings, the four buildings there, and then off to the corner of the, typically you put them in the loading dock area where it doesn't make sense to have a loading dock. So, but no, we don't have them shown yet.
Yeah, I mean, the most important thing is because you're industrial going up against residential, obviously you want to try to get it as far away, because that's a question that comes up pretty much every project, you know, dumpsters, what time they're going to be dumped and all that. If they're that far away, I mean, it's a good distance from the nearest house. The only other question I had, I brought this up at DCC, I know fire safety has reviewed this, but I still would suggest that you reach out to the fire company, which is very close, and just kind of keep them, even if you just gave them a phone call or dropped some plans off, just keep them in the loop, because they're obviously, they're a small fire company, and they're basically your neighbor. So I think that would go over big.
Yeah, we actually, Fire Services, we gave them the master plan, and I know they have, I forget the gentleman's name of Fire Services.
Joe Biziano.
Yes, Joe had brought the master plan down to the local department or was planning to.
Yeah, I spoke to Joe at DCC, but I just wanted to follow up with you, so we'd have two voices here. Thank you.
And Paul, I just want to let you know real quick, that emergency access that they're showing right there, I believe was what Joe Biziano was requiring due to the amount of buildings on the site.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Susan, do you have any comments?
I just had a question on the parking, whether all those parking spaces are required by the loading docks. Or the warehouse.
When you say, let me just make sure I understand what you're asking. When you say the parking space is vehicle parking or the truck parking?
Vehicle.
Um, I mean, again, I think we.
A lot of it is, Susan, is going to be dependent on like the tenant requests. So like, hard thing in warehousing, marketing, and design is, you know, a lot of it is very contingent on the tenant, right? So like, right now, and what's drafted, we always try to go in for what would be the worst case scenario and the most impervious square footage for what a building would need. And for what's shown here in the master plan was a four-building approach, what we're actually submitting on is What we're actually submitting on is that hundred and twenty thousand square foot, which is part of our phase one A, which was on that other plan. Uh, I don't know if you can switch to that over Zach.
Uh, actually Sean's got control. Sean, can you switch over to the phase one A one?
So this would, this would be your worst case scenario for parking and, and this was based off, you like a, a few, a few folks that we had talked to and just other projects that we were involved in for like a hundred and twenty thousand square foot tenant. So this would be the worst case scenario, but it, it, it definitely could be reduced depending on the tenant.
Correct. And I was, um, you stalled, you stalled long enough Chuck to let me be able to look it up. So we, we have in there two hundred and fifteen parking spaces shown, eleven of which are accessible spaces. The code requires one space for every one and a half employees. So that's where it is kind of dependent on the tenant. You could have a warehouse that doesn't have very many employees, or you could have another style tenant that, that uses this warehouse space and has more employees. So I think the, as Chuck noted, the two hundred and fifteen spaces is, is a, is a conservative amount of spaces for the amount of square footage we're showing, so.
It will also base it off of the, uh, the office space that the warehouse requires too.
Correct.
That's correct.
So the number could change.
Yes, ma'am.
No other questions?
Okay, Craig, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, uh, I, I agree with Joe on building two in, in this phase that the, certainly the truck access should get moved to the inner part of, of the project to move it further away from, from, uh, the local residents. As a matter of fact, I guess I'd want to know whether or not it'd be even possible to have both the parking and the, the loading docks both internal to the property so that there's nothing on the neighbor, neighbor side. That would be one, one thought. I, I guess I'd like to hear why the burrs went from thirty feet to down to fifteen feet. Um, I didn't notice that, but Joe brought that up as well.
That was actually prior to McFarland Johnson, so I can answer that for Adam. So at one time we were, you know, our original site design called for a forty foot berm, but actually through a department meeting towards the tail end of post planning approvals for phase one, the departments had noted that, you know, forty foot acoustically, you know, it, it seemed almost too tall. I don't know if it was stormwater that was worried about the slope on the size of the, 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 uh, berm. But they said, you know, it should only be around this height of those residential buildings. So, you know, right now that berm's actually already been constructed under phase one. And I believe it's actually around twenty feet. So that could be an, an easy correction on our, on our sketch plan that actually adds built where the berm is. But, uh, we were trying to make sure that we matched the, the vertical height of the residential buildings acoustically, so we didn't have the noise.
Okay. All right. I mean, I'll leave that back to, to Joe. Can we go back to the master, the, the master plan? What, what changes since, since phase one A is no longer going to be used for what it was originally intended? What, what changes, if any, are taking place in phase one because of this now new use to phase one A?
That, that's a really good question, a really good question, Craig. If you can, um, Sean, if you could pull up the site plan just for phase one A. So you'll note, um, the boulder linework that is on the one building to the, the page north here. Uh, you'll see that there was an addition of a, about ten parking spaces on the front of that building as well as a loading dock on the back. So instead of there being a big yard, now there'll just be a, a loading dock on the backside with access to the, continue to have access to the road.
Okay.
Network internal.
And what, what are you going to use, the building that you are going to use? Are you still going to use that building or is that going to be used for something else now?
We're actually still utilizing the building that we had designed Craig for our, our shop there. We're just going to build it on spec right now is the plan. We, I, I was going to submit it in the next couple of weeks here to the building department for a building permit, but it would just be built on spec to what our shop originally was, and we would try to acquisition a tenant that fit that building.
Okay, so you, so you're not planning to use that building?
No, sir. We would not use it. Our internal site work company, building company and property management are not intended to use it. Right now it's, it would be a, a, a building to market for a tenant.
Okay. And then I'm sorry, can you go back to the master one more, one last time? I have one, one last question. So we were talking about potentially access out, out through the north of the property, correct? And there was, either way you have to cross CP rail property. No matter where it is, correct?
That's correct.
So if there's an issue with the arsenal property, would it be possible to move the, the built, the northernmost building? Move that further north and loop back through in between buildings two and three? And does that accomplish what, what we're looking for as a, as another form of access? And then you don't necessarily have to deal with the arsenal property.
So the, the reason that we were trying to, the arsenal property, I think would be a difficult endeavor to try to get anything from them to try to get out of this job. So I think CP would definitely be the, I mean, from my perspective, the preferred route, right? I think we'd get a little better traction from them with some town backing. But the, the reason behind that access down on that part of the property Craig was dating back to when we originally had kind of discussed this property with Joe LaCavita on the Route thirty two linkage study. That was why we were trying to get it to the one fifty five. Does that answer your question? And then that way we got it out of the residential micro pockets, the, the zoning of the micro pockets, the residential on Lincoln Avenue and then direct it through our job.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get that, that that would be the most preferred, I guess. Does the other meet most of? And I'm not, I'm certainly not saying, you know, that I'm getting hung up on this. I'm just asking a question and you guys can all take a look at it, I guess.
Hey Craig.
Yep.
Hey, it's Joe, it's Joe Grasso. It's, it's a great comment and something that I think we really want to, you know, be cognizant of and pay attention as, as the plan moves forward because our concern based on, you know, very limited information is we're, you know, we're looking about, I don't know, half a million square feet of light industrial warehouse use. And depending on the tenants, you can, you can be dealing with tremendous truck traffic volumes. And, and the route of those trucks to arterial, arterial highways is going to be something that's, you know, we really need to understand and be comfortable with so that we're not creating, you know, access issues or impacts on uh, non-industrial properties. So, you know, based on our cursory review, we could, we could start to say, hey, the, the, the ultimate development of this property could be limited based on the traffic impacts that it's going to generate if all the traffic is going to go down to first street. Without, without another means of primary access. So, you know, I think we just, we want to keep this at a twenty thousand square foot level, you know, at least until we get through concept to understand, you know. And again, we, we have to understand where, what we're seeking approval for is really like one A and one B. But seeker, uh, you know, forces us to look at cumulative impacts. So now's the time for, for the applicant to understand. You know, if, if we're, if we're not, uh, able to, uh, you know, handle five hundred square, five hundred thousand square feet of traffic on first street. Let's get them starting to look for alternative, you know, access points, not including, you know, ninth half.
Yeah, because I think we were, I mean, as I recall, we had a little bit of concern about where the boulevard comes out in relation to the turn and the tracks and, and everything. And anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Chief Hyder?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of points. First of all, I'm sorry again for the video. For whatever reason, Sean, the password does not work for me getting in on my cell phone. They usually provide the, the video. Couple of things with the property line, I don't think you're going to be able to provide much of a buffer visually tree wise, uh, on the Lincoln Avenue side. I'd like to see how you're going to address that. To the turnaround, even though Joe Biziano might want to, if you remember right, as a board, we were dead set against any connection to ninth, to ninth. And in that area of fifth, it was imperative that we have that berm go across. So I don't know how we now can change our whole attitude and put a truck turnaround where that berm was supposed to be. Um, and to, to the point of that Joe just raised, the big picture. You can, you can run another road out to one fifty five, but that's not going to change the direction of where these trucks are going to go. You know, they're either going to go up one fifty five. Now you're getting into the high school zone. That heavy traffic, uh, traffic on one fifty five. And now in one fifty five is an absolute zoo during the course of the day. Or they're all going to go down first street. And I think we as a board just got to realize that's, that's it. There's no other choices. And, um, you don't want them all going down first street, but that's the only way to get the interstate highway. You surely don't want them going all up one fifty five. So, but I don't think that second entrance of one fifty five is going to help either one, one way or the other, just my opinion. But the most important thing for me is that turnaround, uh, and how you're going to visually separate this from the tracks and have some kind of visual impact looking from Lincoln Avenue. Because I do, I like what the developer's done in the past. I know he'll go do a good job. But at the end of the day, there's still some warehouses that we'd love to at least make it somewhat attractive from the backup. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Good comments. Lou?
I guess the biggest concern I have is the truck turnaround. If we could just move it more internally, I think it would be a better, better project and bring that berm across. Because, uh, as the chief said, that we as a board had major concerns about that area. And I agree with that. That's all.
Okay, Chip?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with the chief on the not, not using one fifty five would be, I don't think it'd be a great, uh, plan because I travel that almost every day. And it'd be a real bear for them to get out of there, get on a one fifty five. And then have to go down to Broadway and you go all the way up to twenty third street and then get on there. It's much quicker to get on from, uh, first street. What's going to be done with that? That, uh, mountain of, uh, junk cars. I mean, that's unsightly. Nobody saw it until they took down all the trees. Now everybody can see it.
So right now we are, part of our plannings that we have planned is, is in this, come next year in the spring, when we actually get to restore everything that we've graded. A lot of those trees had to come down for miscellaneous site grading. Um, and then next year we, even for, you know, for our tenants as well, we plan on replanning trees around Metro Metals so that it's screened again.
Well, that, that would it, it would include surrounding it with a berm then, wouldn't it?
Correct. So there would be trees on the berm and then we would have tree buffers for the complex in phase one and into phase one A that would be treed so that Metro Metal was screened.
What about that brick building? Is that going? On ninth?
Right now we were, if, if the berm were to be carried through as, as requested, then yes, the, uh, building would be removed. If the, if the, uh, fire access, the gated fire access was to remain, we were looking at restoring the building for the historical value of having it. Talking with Peter, my owner, but if it's, if it's, it's not a, an item that we're, we're dead set on, if you folks would like it removed, if you think it's unsightly, um, we can do that.
Well, I think that depends upon whether it serves any function and if it's restorable.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm okay, Peter.
Okay, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I, I think the, the comments made, uh, by Joe Grasso as well as the board members are good forty thousand feet height, uh, comments. And there were also some other particular ones about moving buildings, buildings around a little bit and so forth. So I don't really have anything to add. Obviously the cul-de-sac and the connection there is important to us. So maybe, um, maybe staff can visit that again with fire safety to see if there's alternative, uh, internally. If we actually make the connection to one fifty five. Is anybody else? Yeah. Zach, were you saying something or?
Yeah, I just, I just want to let you, I just emailed Joe Biziano one more time just to get clarification from him.
Okay, uh, I don't have any more comments. Does anybody else? Okay, thank you to the applicant. We appreciate the, uh, the master plan view. I think, I think it's very helpful for planning purposes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll call up the, uh, next and final item on the agenda. Six, three, five Columbia Street, Starlight Retail, and we've seen this a few times. Concept plan review for a six point one acre parcel for construction of a three story sixty thousand three hundred and forty four square foot building. First floor, twenty five hundred square foot bank with two drive through lanes, a three thousand square foot thirty seat restaurant, a two thousand square foot retail area and entrance lobby and office. Second and third floors, fifty two thousand eight hundred and forty four square feet of general office. Two hundred and seventy three parking spaces and the zoning of this site is COR, which is commercial office residential. And we'll turn this over to Sean for any introduction the department may have and then to the, uh, to the applicant.
Thank you. Monique Wabba is our planner leading the review on this. Monique, do you have any comments here?
Oh, good evening. I am not Sean as the screen says, just using the word computer. No, the only thing I wanted to add is, uh, you're right, you have seen this a number of times. The only issue planning has is with the amount of parking. The goal should be adequate, but not excessive. There are a number of different, uh, uses in the building, um, and the parking requirements have been calculated individually. But seeing as you're, you're, you're reviewing this as a whole, you can account for shared parking. And I know the applicant is going to address this and I believe Joe will as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dan Hirschberg to present the case.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Now I'm, now I'm unmuted. Daniel Hirschberg with the firm of Hirschberg in Hirschberg. I'm here today, uh, representing this project. We've been here before. There are a couple of people in the audience that might want to speak, but I'll try to cover the issues that they might have. There's DeBuco and Tom Owens from Vlessi. And there's Dennis Reguso and Matt Tyler from The Architect who are also here. Next slide. This site plan is pretty much the site plan you saw before. We have made some changes. We widened out some of the, uh, planting areas. We, uh, modified some of the pedestrian access, so it's more pedestrian friendly, crossing the parking lot from different directions. And, uh, this is actually, it's the third time you've seen it. Went through a modified sketch plan review where we relocated the building back further and that, that seems to, to solve a whole bunch of the problems with the building up close to the intersection of Columbia Street and Coliseum Drive. Next, we have the rendering view. Which, the next slide, this is the rendering view, which is the same that we presented our, our advanced sketch plan. It, it, um, steps the building up to make it, um, two and three stories, uh, so that, that, uh, makes the building more visually pleasing, we think. A great use of glass. Uh, the question was raised last time, will there be a lot of reflection from the glass? And the glass were designed to be non-reflecting glass so that we won't have, uh, lights, uh, coming hard, hard off, uh, that glass wall as people drive by. Next. This shows the, the parking issue. Oops, my lettering got all screwed up at the bottom, but I'll tell you that these uses are not, are certainly not cast in stone. We thought about a larger restaurant, a smaller restaurant, but we don't have a restaurant at all designed for it yet. So we thought we might have a, um, a real sit down upper, you know, class type restaurant with only thirty seats and that might work, but we might also go to a sixty seat restaurant, which would require a little more parking. But we don't have a tenant yet, so that's sort of hanging. And retail also is, um, we don't really have tenants for that. A bank, we don't have a tenant for, but, uh, the bank footprint is very similar to many banks that we've done before, and I think could be suitable here as part of the center. And a general office, we actually don't have a tenant there either, right? So essentially we're going on this building without having specific tenants. So essentially, we're going on this building without having specific tenants. Well, we do have uses. And uh, during the process between um, our last submittal and now, we amended the parking a little bit. The total uh, parking required by the things that we had laid out was two hundred and seventy-eight spots. We took an allowance for shared parking of ten percent. It might be, should be more, maybe less. We're not sure. The code is not specific on shared parking with these sort of uses. So the net required parking went down. Uh, we were writing two hundred and seventy-three spots. Monique, in a letter on behalf of the staff, said, could we bank some? And I checked with my client. My client is certainly willing to bank. And we think about forty parking spots with what they would propose to bank um, for now. And if they, a tenant comes along that needs more, we, we would put the bank parking back in. We'll design the stormwater to accommodate that. And the actual locations of the, of the bank parking, we can certainly take up between now and preliminary final submission. Next. This shows the usage table. Actually, we're, we have more green area now than was there in the past. It was forty-five point one percent green. We're going up to forty-nine and a half percent green. That's what's, most of this area was a large parking lot that was used when a Coliseum used to be active as a starlight theater. Or even before that. Uh, so that the uh, the green area is actually greater. We added some green area in between. And if we bank some of the parking, the parking area would go down too. Next. I just have some technical issues to review. Uh, people were concerned about the conservation overlay area and the hatched areas. Where the hatched area in the upper left of that is the, is the limit of the um, conservation overlay district. The green city area is the portion on the starlight site in a conservation overlay district, which is currently restricted. Next. And this shows uh, the relationship of um, the shaded areas are the shaded areas of wetlands that uh, wetlands or wetland buffers that New York State permitted the applicant to invade by purpose of giving a large set aside of uh, wetlands uh, uh, for con- on a conservation easement area to New York State. New York State and Army Corps of Engineers entered a joint agreement with the applicant to preserve a significant portion of the site. So uh, that occurred when the joint permit was issued. Next. I think there's a next one, or maybe not. Yeah. We, we, we request three waivers. One is the placement of parking. As we moved the building back from Coliseum Drive and from Columbia Street, it made the front yards necessary to park it. And when we had the building up before, we actually could have met no parking in the front yard because the building would have been first in line from both Coliseum Drive and Columbia Street. To move it back, we really have to put parking in the front yard. That's the first waiver. And then she has a second waiver, which is uh, uh, the uh, number of parking. Theoretically, we'll have less than required number of parking because the code doesn't say shared parking how much, but the code permits uh, the planning board to allow us uh, up to fifty percent decrease in the amount of required parking. So uh, we expect that waiver would not present a problem. And the third waiver is the front setback. Uh, we exceed the front setback. And our traffic inclusion, as I went over before, this site was determined before to be part of a master plan development that uh, the traffic study considered. I always thought the entire seeker was done for this insight, but it wasn't. What we did is we had the traffic study consider the entire site since the major potential issue of impact was the traffic. Uh, the traffic impact study took, took a look at the entire site, and this site had been considered for a level of development that is actually higher than what we're proposing there. So we think that, in effect, the traffic study uh, will suffice for us to go forward with the project. And our, our goal here is to uh, ask the board to do a, an updated seeker determination. Uh, we've uh, prepared a, a full and formal assessment form and submitted as part of this project site. Uh, I think probably if you go back to the site plan, we can put it to the board to discuss, and so most of the discussion will have to do with the site plan. Thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Pete, you're muted.
As with our last project, this has been being reviewed by our town designated engineer, CHA, Joe Grasso. Can you give us your comments?
Sure, Pete. Thanks. So, so there is a uh, a letter in your packet that we issued on this current plan dated November fifth. We, we obviously have, have looked at this a number of times as it's gone through a number of uh, what, what we would consider significant, you know, revisions and refinements in response to, you know, comments from our office as well as uh, comments from the planning board through the various uh, sketch plan reviews. Uh, the plan that we're looking at is relatively consistent with, with what was submitted at the last time it went for a, as uh, planning board update. Our letter does touch on uh, some of the more significant changes to the plans. Um, you know, since it was initially proposed, which Dan did a really good job uh, highlighting for the board. So I'm not, I'm not going to go through those, but um, you know, we commend the applicant for being so responsive to the comments uh, you know, brought up. And uh, and the, and uh, a plan that, that really has addressed all the comments that, that have, that we've heard up to this point. Um, you know, we think that uh, Monique's comments about the, the shared parking is a great comment. And, and again, Dan offered up a significant reduction or, or land banking some spaces. We think that's a great way, way to go. Obviously, you know, when we look at, you know, retail and office and, and especially restaurants, the actual parking demands is going to be highly dependent on the specific ten tenants. And hopefully, we can get more clarification on those as, as the uh, the, the plan works through the final uh, review process. But we're, we are um, supportive of land banking a substantial number of spaces. I think, you know, the forty spaces that Dan proposes is a good number. Um, it's important that we understand, you know, or get feedback from the board as to, you know, where those land bank spaces should be. Typically, it's ones along the periphery and, and the ones most distant from the, from the front doors that are least convenient for, you know, patrons of the site. Um, but we can get some more detail on that as the plan advances. Obviously, all the stormwater drainage systems, utilities, lighting and stuff is designed for the full build-out so that we don't have to go through significant changes to the plan when those land bank spaces, um, you know, are built, if they're ever required to be built at any point in the future. Um, Dan went through in detail the waivers, which we've identified in our letter. We are supportive of those waivers um, as proposed, and they have provided, you know, the documentation uh, to support those waivers. Uh, the architectural renderings are, are fantastic. We think it's a great looking, looking, looking building. Um, and we're glad to see that the building architecture is still maintaining that high level that we saw with the initial uh, renderings. The access onto Columbia Street is going to require a DOT permit. They have been brought into the review process early, and they are supportive of the uh, access connections with the primary access off Coliseum Drive and then the rights and rights out off Columbia Street. Um, we've got some, a minor comment regarding the uh, the stormwater approach to it. And then um, you know, from a uh, seeker standpoint, the project site is in the bout road Columbia Street GIS study area, so uh, compliance with the finding statements is, is going to be required. Dan talked about the, the comprehensive traffic study that this site was a part of, uh, which, which was required to support the um, uh, the ACO project, uh, both with Phase One and Phase Two build-out as well as the site. So the traffic impacts have been uh, you know, already thoroughly studied and, and addressed through the creation of the uh, connector road and, and mitigation fees. Also, from a seeker's standpoint, our letter erroneously identified that the, that the um, that the seeker had already been completed. Dan touched on that during his comments. And seeker was not done as part of the ACO review. Um, so, so the planning board will have to complete seeker as part of the site plan application. Uh, Dan's office has provided us a, an updated short and formal assessment form, which does a good job describing the uh, the project site and the project. Um, and we are not anticipating any significant impacts as a result of a development as proposed. So uh, we would uh, recommend that the planning board, you know, withhold making any secret determinations until we get, you know, further along in, in the uh, in the review process. But they're definitely headed down a, a good direction with the project thus far.
Sean, do you have any more? Is that it? Is that it, Joe? Sean, do you have any members of the public interested in speaking?
No, I believe that the only folks here are representatives of the applicant.
Okay, we'll uh, open it up to the board. I'll call it in reverse order from last time. Chip, do you have anything?
Yeah, the uh, and the interior of the building, are those uh, stairwells, uh, escalators?
What? No, it, the, the white box, I don't think there's stairwells or escalators. Uh, I'm not sure that the floor plan's developed to the level that they determined whether or not any escalators are needed. There's definitely elevators. There's an elevator entrance and a lobby coming off the other side of the parking.
Oh, this, this was provided in the uh, in the packet, and it's labeled just mixed, a new mixed-use building, but it shows what looks to be stairwells or elevators. I don't know. I was just wondering if you knew.
Uh, this is Dennis with SRA. Um, those are placeholders right now, so we do have vertical circulation planned for the building, which will include two to three stair towers and an elevator.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I, I just had one comment. I just wonder what the efficacy is of having all this office space when, if the only, I don't know if you call it a good outcome of this COVID, is the fact that uh, a lot more people are working from home instead of going to the office.
Well, I, I'd leave it to Dave Buco to, to reiterate, but the, the deal is that they believe that the market's strong enough for high-quality office space for users that still need office space and will still bring a significant number of their employees into the office on a regular basis. That's, that's really the market that this building is trying to capture.
Yeah, this is, this is Dave Buco. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, from our, from our standpoint, good, this one, we think the uh, location's terrific. Having the ACO building there uh, validates the site. People are actually very happy with the ingress and egress, the access. And uh, you're right, life is going to change in the office space, but office space is still needed and maybe a little more boutique. But we're highly confident in a community like Colony that um, uh, we're going to be able to attract high quality. And this is designed to attract higher quality tenants. It's not going to be um, a low-end type of stuff. And we're very bullish. Otherwise, we wouldn't be spending the money to go through this approval process.
Well, you, you got one of the best-looking mousetraps in the area.
You're absolutely right. I mean, it's, it's, that, that is, that is bait out there. When they see what, what ACO came out and looks like, I mean, we've got more positive comments on that project than any project we've done in the, in the capital region.
I'm good.
Lou?
Dan, were you uh, looking for suggestions as to where to use the um, the, the parking? Well, again, we certainly go through that. If you want suggestions, go back to the site plan and pick where you would like to put them. Or if you make, if you want to just mark something up and get it through planning staff to me or directly, we can certainly consider them. There'll be pluses or minuses. Obviously, from the developer's standpoint, the ones we'd like to get rid of are the ones that are furthest away from the building and most inconvenient to get to it. From your standpoint, the issue is probably making some more green space uh, on the visible portions from the roadway. So there'll be some sort of compromise between those two. If we're, if we're banking forty, that's a good number of parking spots. It isn't, you know, it's, it's uh, it's fifteen percent of the total parking we're taking out and banking. Uh, if this building's successful at all, we will probably come close to filling all those parking spots. So uh, the goal would be not to, not to make them so inconvenient for the developer that they're, they're upset with where we put them. So it'll be a balancing act. But we're, you know, it, Lou, if you want to send along your selections or let us know now, we can certainly consider them. Wha- what I was looking at was a couple, a couple ideas. Right along Coliseum Drive, those parking spots, or even in the rear lot, take those parking and then directly across from that on the other side. Because those seem to be the farthest away from the building. Well, the, it, that strip from the driveway over to the green area, that, that one might be, that, that one might beat the need of both. It helps the view from the roadway by moving parking further away. And it, it's uh, a lot of spaces that are less convenient for the, for the applicant. Uh, that, that's some, that area certainly could be considered. And then, then if you go directly across from there, I'm, yeah, there, and take the remaining out of that area maybe? Yeah. Because I, I think. That'd, that'd be good. I think if you went all the way down Coliseum Drive, you just about have all forty. But uh, I, I was looking at getting, you know, getting the parking spaces that are farther away from the building as far as being banked. Yeah. What if, you know, if we take those uh, half dozen spots on the end of the parking lot, we might loop up, lock those off. Combination of those, those are furthest away. Uh, makes it more contiguous green area, so there's advantage to that. Let's take those on advice and we'll come back with something. And hopefully, we can circulate it, the planning staff and um, Joe Grasso and uh, they can share with board members for, get additional input. Okay, thank you, Lou. That's all I have, Pete. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Chief Hyder?
Uh, yeah, I gotta say that this building is just going to be a beautiful addition in this area. Um, I've said it from the start, well, ever since they took away their nineteen-seventies thing that they proposed initially. But the um, I think this building would do a lot to draw attention to the neighborhood and hopefully get something neighboring commercial projects or commercial people to upgrade their yards to look quite like this. The only con- not a concern I have, I noticed there's absolutely no street trees mentioned across the Johnson roadside. I don't know if that's because of easement problems. You have like eight boxwoods across there. I think that'll look kind of crazy. Um, typically, you have something else besides them. But um, other than that, I just, it's just an absence of street trees that I think we need maybe to put a couple of. But other than that, I'm fully in favor of the project.
Thank you. Okay, Craig?
I, I agree with everyone else that the building is, is actually stunning. I, I think it's a fabulous addition. Um, can, can we go back to, how many square feet are you at this point proposing for the restaurant, Dan? Uh, I'm unclear on the restaurant and the retail space.
We, we called it three thousand square feet with a restaurant, and that was just a figure we picked. We had no, there was no tenant involved. Three thousand square feet would be a, would be a small restaurant with thirty, thirty seats, well-spread apart, about half of that used for kitchen and backroom space. So it wouldn't be a very big restaurant. But that first floor, we also have a couple thousand square feet. The retail space called out. If the restaurant wants to be bigger, we could go it out that way. The patio area is certainly a great place for outdoor dining. So we think that the restaurants are unknown, and I'll have to leave it to Dave Buco and group to find me a restaurant that wants to move here, and then we can work around them.
Okay.
Yeah, Craig, Craig, this is all speculative right now with COVID. I mean, uh, we've got restaurants as tenants. Some are doing great. Some are just hanging on by a thread. Uh, we love the location. We like the traffic access. And from our standpoint, once we get this approved, then we can really go out and market it. But it's a crapshoot right now in today's environment.
Yeah, I mean, it, one of the, probably since, since you've gone to this design, the only, the only issue generally speaking, that I've had with this project right from the very beginning, is a lack of green space on Columbia Street, especially. All of the green space is in, for the most part, is in the wetlands area. So I'm going to make a proposal that probably isn't super popular, at least with the developer. But I would propose that the bank parking be all along Columbia Street. Your restaurant is not that big. The retail space is not that big. Even if you lose most of those parking spaces along Columbia Street, you still have an extraordinary number of parking spaces close to the building to meet the needs of the bank. close to the building to meet the needs of the bank, the retail and the restaurant, which are the customers that are parking dependent and make decisions maybe sometimes on how close parking is and whatnot. If you're working in the office building, we're still not talking about all that far to go to those back parking spaces, especially in comparison to, to other, other buildings that are larger and have much bigger parking fields. So that would be my suggestion and I under, because it accomplishes getting more green space along Columbia Street if you never have to build those parking spaces out. And honestly, I don't think it impacts at all the operation of the building. That's, that's all I've got.
Craig, one thing that we made a mistake when we colored this up is there's green space outside that proper line. You have to see where the sidewalk is up next to the curb. Between that sidewalk and our property line is also going to be green. We're limited on what we can plant there because this part, we do have utility easements in there, but there is there's a, yep, you, you call them for me. Great.
No, I, 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 I understand that, Dan, but if you lose those, if you use those parking spaces for green space, then you can plant whatever you want.
Yeah.
Right? And you can plant the street trees that, that the chief was, was talking about. And get, quite frankly, more of a balanced green space. That's just my suggestion. And, and I understand that you hate, kind of hate to lose those parking spots, spots, but I actually think it's going to end up, it would end up with a better project. And I do not think it's going to impact the operation of the building at all.
Chief and Craig, I do want to say that there's a, there's that sewer easement in there and our pure waters department doesn't allow any street trees to go in that easement. So that's the only thing that I think that the applicant will run into a problem with street trees along Johnson or Columbia Street.
Hotel Pure Waters.
All right, I'll let Craig know.
Yeah, but Zach, what I'm saying is if they, if they, if the banked area is those parking spaces, then they can plant trees in that area.
Oh, I get you now.
That whole, that whole area can then be trees. So that's it.
Yeah, interesting comment. Susan?
I think it's, the building is absolutely beautiful. I love it. It's different. The waivers are necessitated by the, by the relocating the building. So I'm obviously in favor of those. I think it's a great project and I liked Craig's comments about the green space.
Paul?
Uh, Dan? Have you made any accommodation for EV stations?
Yeah, we, we show, we just show a few of them on there. My guess is by the time this gets built, we might have more, more demand for them. But I think we only showed two EV spaces on the site. We could, we, you know, again, depending upon what the market shows, we think we might be, we might put more on just for the employees of the office space might very well want them. Even if, even if they're not highly used by transit people.
Paul, Paul, right now, based on the buildings we've done, we've put a couple on each of the buildings we've done and they're, they get marginally used from our standpoint as we evolve more into electric cars and green energy. Those are easy to put in at variety of locations.
Okay. Just to, just for a point of interest, I did watch many, many seminars in the last couple of months. There is a new prototype out there that's being used on the West Coast. It's a freestanding charging station. It actually is a platform with a solar panel over it with a battery. And it can be placed anywhere in the parking lot. They're portable. No underground wiring is needed. Just going forward, if you ever have a chance, I'll try to get the information. It, it might, it might be a selling point later on for one of your, one or more of your tenants. And it's really offensive, it's a cost, but like you said, they're totally portable. They're, they're, the power comes from the sun. And I know you already have solar panels in the other parking lot. And it's, it's going to be the thing of the future. It may not be for a couple of years, but just going forward, because I know you do a lot of commercial development. And having an ability to move them around from building to building or even within the parking lot, just keep an ear out for that. I'll try to get that information maybe over to Dan at some point. And going forward, we can possibly talk about it for other applications, but otherwise it's a great project. I'm really impressed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. It's a great idea.
Uh, thank you for the, all the progress we've made on this. I think it's a great project too. I think the building looks fantastic. It seems the one variable is where, where do we bank the parking? Craig made some interesting points and you know, I'm sort of undecided. I, I guess I lean towards what Craig is saying personally. So why don't, why don't you think about those issues and does anyone else have anything to say on this project?
Peter, just to the
Yes, Steve Hyder, yes.
Okay.
Peter, this is a compromise on that bank parking to Craig's point, you know, you could bank about eight spots down by the, right in, right out only Columbia Street. Bank that first group of eight spots up on the top, which will at least increase your green space at that front corner and at the bottom corner. And it's just a compromise. There's sixteen spaces you could bank and then maybe bank the other twenty in the back.
Okay, Lou, were you going to say something?
No, I kind of just like, like what the chief just said. Kind, and that's where I was going before, split it up a little bit. So it's not in one area. And to to, to Craig's point, that probably would be a good idea is, is to do some of them in the front there and add more green space in the front and then take the rest of them out of the back.
Anybody else have an opinion or a comment on that?
I just have one that something that Lou and I talk about all the time. Street trees, they sound nice until you're trying to find someplace. You're driving up the road and you're looking for a location. And we have it on Wolf Road now. You can't find the businesses because these trees are, in the, in the summertime, are pretty much blocking everybody's view. And so having them right as you, as you make this turn, I'm not so sure about street trees for visual impact, negative visual impact that they might have on this project.
But you know, as a general proposition, I'm not in the same school as you on that one. So maybe I'll have to take a ride with you and Lou. Obviously we don't want to block. I don't have any trouble finding locations on Wolf Road, but I, obviously if somebody's pulling in and out, you don't want to reduce their visibility. So maybe we'll take a ride when COVID's over on, on that.
We're had a tendency to block, block the buildings is what it does when they're, when you're in full bloom.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Yeah. I'm still in the other school right now, but so.
Yeah, I think from a, you know, professional planning standpoint, from a staff view, I think this is probably a compromise that, that has to be struck here because I think one of the things that everybody likes about this building is the elevation. And there's probably some sightlines that you don't want to obstruct with the trees. So I think that's probably one thing I would caution about. I would agree with Craig that you know, some improvement to the, to the green space along Johnson Road would you know, would help with the placemaking aspect of planning.
Okay, why don't you all come back and wow us with something good that, that works?
It necessarily has to be trees. It can just be beautiful landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can get away with using some large shrubs with some good impact in there. Words, the trees might be prohibited by easements. Although water and sewers don't want us to put anything larger than grasses in there, but we can try to work out something.
Okay. So between the applicant, the staff and our town designated engineer, I think you're hearing what we're saying on that. And you could probably strike, strike a compromise that makes everybody satisfied. Okay. Any other items?
Yeah, I, I to Paul's point about electric cars. The auto industry projects that by night, twenty forty that fifty four percent of the new cars sold will be all electric. So something.
Well, to compare, to accommodate EV stations, the only thing we might do based upon advice from the client is how many, how many future spaces you want to apply for. And alls you really have to do is put a conduit in because putting up those stanchions is a very easy project because all they, they actually bolt to the sidewalk. So if they have a conduit in place, you just connect it, you know, just run the wire through the conduit and bolt those stanchions to the sidewalk and you got yourself a charging station. So it's not, it's not very difficult to accommodate and increase the number of charging stations.
We agree with that. And to the extent that the consumer demands that and our customers demand that, we're going to do that anyway. I mean, we've, we've dealt with, we've done that with NYSERDA. We've, we've collaborated with them. So from that standpoint, if we're X amount of people are using electric cars, we're going to want to make sure that our tenants are accommodated.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. The application is for concept acceptance. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Who's that? Yep. Oh. Who made the motion?
Lou.
Lou made the motion. Do we have a second?
Chip.
Chip, okay, Chip second. Any discussion? Obviously it's subject to all the conditions in the town designated engineer letter that the comments you heard tonight in the town department comments. Uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and have a great holiday, everybody.
Great holiday.
Happy holiday, everybody.
Take care.
Okay.